Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 27th. This is a special meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chair Wyman Krasak, would you please call this meeting to order?
Yes. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coastern Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken. The following matters before this Board. Fire exits are located on eastern and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everybody with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the fire in the United States of America.
I will now take roll call. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
James Bonanno.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter, absent. Alexis Taylor, absent. Eric Galipo.
Here.
Galipo.
Thank you. Here.
Daniel Shinameo.
Here.
Rick Lambert, absent. Barbara Krasak.
Here. All right. The first item that we have on the agenda is the resolution for Partners Property LLC, 929 Asbury Avenue. Anyone have any concerns? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
If I remember correctly, there mentions in the resolution a couple of people who are not at this meeting. It was that different in the first page.
This would be...
There is a list of who can and can't vote on this one, correct?
Yes. Yes. Okay. And the people that can, is there anybody here that cannot vote?
Let me see. James, Jim, Jennifer's not here, Eric, Daniel. I believe you are all eligible to vote.
Good.
Yes.
Does he list the affirmative votes?
Does he list what?
Does Jennifer...
Yes. He does.
So that's your list of...
Yes.
Oh, and I cannot vote because I am not listed in the A's or the N's. So I cannot vote.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
So will.
Second.
Mayor John Moore. Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter, absent. Eric Galipo.
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Then the other, the application that we have in front of us is 545 Lake Avenue, Urban Renewal.
I've reviewed the notices here in proper form.
Great. Great. So it seems as though we, this is a special meeting, just in case we hadn't mentioned that. But it is a special meeting that was requested by the applicant. I'd like to say that the first order of business is the checklist for completion. If we could go over that, please. It starts on the CCH report, page two, starting with 2.0.
Well, we get our step sworn. There may be some questions. We need to answer. Gentlemen, please look at your hand. You're testing against the truth, the truth, not the truth.
Yes.
Any state and eggs for the record in the affiliation of the board?
Michael Sullivan, Clark, Kate, and Hens, Board Planner.
Doug Wellen, Inside Engineering, Board Engineer.
So my understanding is, is that the applicant is looking for waivers on the checklist requirements?
Let me first put my appearance on the record if I'm not Andrew Karas from the firm Fox Rix on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Cash is speaking, then Mike.
Hi, sir. Andrew Karas, Fox Rix, on behalf of the applicant.
I have a procedural issue to make sure we get on the record. Mr. Shinameo was not a member of the board at the time when this was approved. He can participate in the discussions but not vote. So he has not, has not, is not familiar with the record. Okay? If we need his vote at some point in time, we can see if we can retrieve the records or the videos or what have you, transfers, and have him be qualified.
Agreed.
That is fine. Okay. Thank you. Is that on the board? No. Same with Mr. Shinameo. Okay. Same situation. We still have five.
We have five.
We still have five.
We have a core.
Yeah, but we still have a core.
Very good. And your question, I'm sorry?
I'm, the question is, is that, or the statement is, is that you're asking for numerous waivers on completeness, on the completeness area? Is that correct?
No, I, through the checklist here on these things, we submitted a site plan from the engineer.
So that's the first one?
Yeah, I'm going through them.
Okay.
The date of the amended site plan submission is 7/11/2022. Now, it says that it's not signed. What I'm looking at is a signed site plan that was submitted. So I don't know respectfully what was not signed.
You're going down the list?
Yeah, we're going down the list. We're going down the list.
Are you using the report for the checklist?
I'm using the report.
All right. So why don't we, why don't we enter the report? Yeah, let's get the report.
That's my understanding. My understanding, what was being referred to is the report.
Yes.
I just want to get us on the right track and sheet here. Okay. So why don't we make the CCH report dated September 23, 2022, as D1, authored by Michael Navona. So, and if you would reference what you're talking about this way, we can check them off as we go. It makes some sense.
Just to, just to be clear, is it sealed as well?
Yes.
And the date? Just to make sure I have the same document.
Sure. Indicates on here, 7/11/2022. Indicates next, that a survey, design indicated survey was used as a base. When you look on page two, general note six, it makes specific reference to a survey.
What was the date of the survey?
Date of the survey is April 9, 2015.
April 9, 2015.
Right. Title block says, "Name and address of the owner and developer have not been provided." The name and address of the developer and owner is reflected on each page of what had been submitted as part of the site plan, as Cookman Community Development Urban Renewal LLC with an address.
Just a second before we... Go ahead, Michael.
I just want, I just want to ask about the survey. Does the survey reflect the current conditions on the site?
Well, I can't provide testimony to that. That would have to be the engineer that can provide testimony. But it does, it does reflect a survey, just where...
The survey was not included, but it's based on a survey from 2015.
It says.
And, and can I ask about that? It also says there's something about, there's the five, made five years ago, something about a subdivision made five years ago? Is that...
Well, keep...
Because you said 2015. So 15 is more than, more than five years ago?
There was, just so we're clear about the, how this developed, this was not only a subdivision application that was granted. It was a preliminary and final major site plan application.
Right.
So it was both.
Right.
All right. I just want to make sure that we all understand the dates for which we're talking about. That resolution approving the application for site plan approval and also the subdivision was from June 12, 2017.
2017, okay.
Five years ago. We then had to come back before this board on subsequent resolutions having to do with parking, providing parking for the residents at 550 Cookman off-site, seeing this particular site, which was a parking lot that was going to be developed. Issue had come up with regard to that, in terms of whether or not there's interim, interim parking agreement that somehow impacted 607, Cookman, I'm sorry, 607 Madison, the ability to park on that site. I'd argued for, I believe, two, two and a half years that that agreement was not in effect and had expired, and that an ordinance was enacted that allowed us to park there. After two and a half years and coming before this board for a number of resolutions, the board ultimately, in April of 2009, agreed with me.
19.
19. 2019, agreed with me. And the condition that had been imposed two years earlier then was deemed to have been satisfied.
Do you have any interrupt for a second? That's a resolution, the fourth resolution in series of four regarding this, relative to this property, dated April 9, excuse me, 8, 2019, and condition 15 having to do with the parking agreement that was addressed.
There's a two-year period in which that had to get accomplished. Continuing on. Title blocks have not been signed or sealed. I'm looking, my review, and again, I would have to get the engineer up here from President Robb. My understanding is, is this is signed properly. 3B. Easements, lot lines, accurate dimensions, bearing and deflecting angles have not been provided on the first sheet. Well, first sheet has on there, as we look at the site plan, it has an aerial of the site, has a 200-foot radius map, it has the zone chart, property owners within 200 feet. On the second page, the site plan, my understanding, we can confirm that with the engineer, that information is reflected. Page two.
So do we have, so does that mean that for 3B, we have everything?
I'm sorry, I can't access the, the plan that he's referring to, so I can't confirm as we're going through.
Did, did you see this one?
I, I have seen it. I don't have it up in front of me. I'm trying to get it. Yeah, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Make sure it's the same one.
Now, it may make sense to have, seeing these are technical items that are being discussed, to have the engineer go through the plan and have him testify through these items, seeing that I am not an engineer.
I mean, if we, if that's, if that's what we need here in order to be able to get the, we, we want to get the right answers to understand where we stand with each one of these. So if that's necessary, then so be it.
Andy, could you take a look at what Michael's looking at to make sure it's the same thing?
The dates, the dates appear to be the same.
So why don't we mark it and get it in?
Why don't we mark this as A1?
Yeah. Let's mark it as A1.
So A1 is the...
Site plan?
Yeah. The cover sheet, the site plan, that includes the lighting plan, et cetera, as a package. With the cover sheet reflect an amended site plan submission dated July 11 of 2022.
When you're done with that, we'll have you mark it when you're done.
Okay. So I can't mark it up then?
Well, Andy, do you have another one you're going to submit?
I am...
Can submit, or do you have one already?
I should have them here, yeah.
All right. So then, yeah, you can mark that one. As long as we have one, we can put it in the record, that's all.
Yep.
It doesn't say that it's based on that, but that's the implication of having a survey. There's no survey included.
There's no survey included. When I submitted this, it was not requested that I provide a survey after I submitted this application seven months ago. And it has not since been requested of me.
But it's not within five years?
It's what's on there.
I'm sorry?
It's the date that's on there, is a survey that was referenced.
So it's not within five years?
It's 2015.
So an exception or waivers required for the survey because it's not within five years?
If, that is correct. If there was a request that was made at the time of submission, seven months ago, for a survey, we would have done it.
Colonel. Easements, easement lines are not located on your easements?
I would have to, again, that's in engineering, I would have to bring in.
Does it, does it make sense to do that, Andy? I mean, would that make sense?
I would have to. Keep in mind, this is an amended application. We're not here to re-engineer the entire building. We're here for limited issues. I can say this, that there, there are comments in your report with regard to changes that would implicate that we would need additional easements. So that I agree with you.
So regarding the easements, do you feel that it would be helpful to have the engineer sworn in?
I think if we're going to talk about anything in the checklist, it's technical in nature, we should have the engineer.
Okay. Let's, let's bring them in.
As much as I would like to tell, my ability is certainly not an engineer. And I think an engineer would be able to talk to these issues better than me.
Okay. Let's bring them in.
Why don't we go through what you can talk about and then...
Okay. So that's, so we're looking at 3B as regarding an engineer coming in? Is that the only one, or are there others?
Well, the flood hazards...
I mean, I mean, before, we haven't, the ones that we haven't gotten to yet.
That's the next...
The ones we've already done.
Oh, okay.
Is 3B the only one that we're looking for an engineer at this point to, to come in and help us out?
One B. Also a couple of...
1B? Okay. All right. All right, got that. Okay. Let's go ahead then, for the next one then.
Where are we at?
For the next one. You said 3B, we need an engineer for, correct?
They'll be able to provide information on that.
Right.
So the next one is the flood hazard?
Flood hazard.
Again, that's the engineer.
Go ahead.
I believe the, the flood hazard line is reflected in here. You have it on C401, on the grading drainage and utility plan, but I think we're, it reflects on there, the 100-year flood line, but we can have the engineer make reference to that.
Okay. Next one is the vehicular... Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
So, so we have it on C401?
Yeah. Yeah, here's that one.
So it's, it's reflected on C401?
Next one is the vehicular circulation?
Again, that, the vehicular circulation has not changed from the original site plan, but irrespective, when you look at the lines, the directional arrows that we have on the site plan, the grading, drainage, and utility plan, the lighting plan, they all reflect the arrows in terms of the direction of where the vehicles are going. In addition to that, we had submitted a plan from American Auto Park, who's providing a system. And we can mark that as A2. That had been submitted.
Okay. Do you want to add something?
I, I do have that. It's this one that's being a problem.
So, okay, so there are no, go ahead.
Just to, just to be clear, the, the checklist item says vehicular circulation, location and dimensions of all parking areas, access drives, driveways, aisles, and parking stalls. All of that, there are no dimensions of parking stalls on this plan, and they are not fully dimensioned.
The parking stalls, and we'll have test, are the same as the prior application, it's the same stalls.
Are they, so nothing has changed at all in the, in the parking area? Nothing?
Yeah, we're adding three-level stackers instead of two.
Okay. So something has changed.
Yeah, we're increasing, by adding three-level stackers, we're able to get more parking in there. But the layout...
So the layout is identical as it was?
We'll have testimony as to the layout.
Are you okay with that, Michael?
Okay.
I'm asking.
The requirement is dimensions. If the board feels like they can...
No. Do we have the dimensions? Because I don't know if we have the dimensions.
We do not have all the dimensions.
All right. We do not have all the dimensions. Okay.
There at least have been mentioned for the, the drive aisle itself?
Yes, on, in American Auto Park. That is correct.
But there, but there's the dimensions for the, there are dimensions at the building edge for the, the openings in terms of the driveway, the two-way driveway.
Correct.
The trash driveway, and then where you have the doorways and things like that. But the, there are no dimensions for the parking spaces themselves.
Okay.
Well, have you ever missed, have you ever missed that?
Yeah, that's not part of the site plan. And just, and just, I understand that that's an exhibit that's been provided. It's not signed and sealed by your architect or your engineer. So in order for that to really come under the umbrella of the site plan application and to have the same gravity, I think it needs to be signed and sealed by your, your architect or your engineer.
Sworn.
So...
Right. Just, just want to recognize that this was submitted.
We, I understand that.
Okay.
Not, not disputing that at all.
But the dimensions were not?
Well, the dimensions are on there.
Michael just said they weren't. So...
Just to be clear, what I'm looking at is the site plan itself.
Right.
That is an exhibit that was submitted.
A2 has the dimensions on there. He's saying that it's not on site, as opposed to A2.
Well, what do we need it on? That's what I need to understand.
Ultimately, it's a need to be signed and sealed by someone.
Okay. All right. So right now, it's not signed and sealed?
Right.
Okay.
And, and just as a commentary on the exhibit, because it's not really the full subject to this, is that the exhibit appears to be based on the former layout, even if it's existing, because it shows the, the previously approved exterior, not the proposed exterior that's actually been built now, the ramps and the other things. So there's a, there's a question as to whether or not it was based on the as-built of the ground floor, or whether it was based on the plan of the ground floor, or whether there is a difference between the as-built condition and the approved condition.
Again, that's in engineering.
Okay.
Got it.
So we'll make sure we bring them in.
Any of these questions?
Well, take that one step further. In reference to the American Auto Park submission, the second page shows an entirely different layout than what was presented initially. Do you have that, do they have?
I do have.
Okay. The second page is entirely different.
But, but that's really like, like a technical distinction, right, that we're getting at here. We're trying to get to the completeness part of this.
Okay.
If there is, if there are some changes that you see in that, that's the second part of this whole discussion. The first part is the completeness.
Right.
Before we move on, can you tell me what A2 was? What is it?
The American Auto Park.
Okay. That's A2?
Correct.
Thank you.
The exterior lighting and lighting plant?
Again, I'll have the engineer address.
Okay.
And just to be clear, there's some, any information that was provided?
Right.
But it does not provide all of the information required pursuant to the checklist.
That's fair. That's fair. Okay. The architecture, the plans for each new building story, including attic, roof, and basement and cellar, slash cellar.
Yeah, we're not doing a floor, we're not changing the floors of the building. It's an amendment to an approval.
Is the roof any different than it was in the beginning?
I'm going to have testimony from the architect as to that.
So it is different? So it is different?
I'll have testimony from the architect reflect any changes that were done.
Okay. And within that testimony, is there a layout that was provided?
For the roof, there was no.
All right. So that's missing. Okay. So that's incomplete. Is there one for, for the modification, any other modifications that, any other floors that changed at all?
No.
So it's only the roof changed?
And the facade.
And the driving, drive, and the parking did not change?
No, the parking, the layout of the stackers changed.
That's all.
Actually, the stackers are going in the same place. They're three-level stackers, not two. The architect will go through that floor, and then he'll provide a testimony as to the additional changes. But the floors themselves are not changed.
I don't know, but the roof did change.
Is the architect going to testify from his own plans or from that?
He has his own, the architect will testify as to his plans.
Okay.
The existing plans or the new plans?
What the architect provided, the plan that he provided.
Initially? Within, what we approved?
From his application?
What we approved, or is this something new?
The architect had submitted a revised plan.
For this meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So then I would, I would question, and I would question why we would feel this is incomplete. If the architect has something that they provided, roof deck, what the changes are to the roof...
There is, on the roof deck, there are changes reflected here to the top and the parapet of the roof. The roof deck itself, looking through here, I don't see anything on there.
Even though it did change?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's incomplete. Okay.
Excuse me, what, what document are you referring to?
This is the plan from the architect, last revision date, 8/3/2021. Why don't we mark that as A3 for identification?
What? Please identify that a little further so I can follow with you.
It's the plans that were submitted from the architectural, architect, J.C.A.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So then we'll have the architect come up for that?
The mechanical equipment on the roof is not listed.
Has not? I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that? I'm sorry.
There is no roof plan, so there is no mechanical shown on the roof. I would have to list a testimony as to any changes with regard to the mechanical.
Okay. So that's incomplete. Okay.
Well, it depends. If there are changes, then it's not, then it's incomplete. If there are no changes, it's not incomplete.
No, if it's no changes, you're right. If there are no changes from the original plan, then it's not incomplete. You're right. Okay. Signs and decorations, or decorations.
I don't believe there's any signage.
There's a sign on, on the Lake Avenue frontage, near the door. It's an aluminum sign with a backlit, it's a backlit aluminum sign. It's not dimensioned or...
All right. I'll have the architect provide testimony. And the project description, we provided a project description, actually twice, and[1786.53] And then I added to it, we requested that a description be provided in terms of how the operation that's going to take place within the garage. Now, keeping in mind that I provided a project description, hours of use, number of shifts, this is a residential building. There are no hours of use or shifts to be worked by employees.
So we can check that off?
Correct.
And given the nature of the application, to increase the parking provided on the site, the existing and proposed number of vehicles to be parked is relevant to the application? So that's?
It's in the application itself. It's on the plans.
It's on the new plan?
That testimony could be provided about that.
Okay, so that's, and that's the?
We can check that off.
That's the engineer?
You don't need the engineer to figure this one out. This is fine.
So that one's okay, all right.
Just because, because we didn't like the description, I mean, it's not there.
Okay. Okay. So would you like to bring up, I would assume that we should bring up the engineer to determine if the items that he was going to speak to are complete or incomplete? We have them, but having them there, they're so far away. That's why we like it to be on a laptop so we can see it on the TV. Unless somebody else feels differently, that they would like to view it from a distance.
Sir, please raise your right hand. I swear the testimony that you've been giving is truthful and accurate.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Christopher Collins, C-H-R-I-S-T-O-P-H-E-R, Collins, C-O-L-L-I-N-S. I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from the University of Virginia. I'm a licensed professional and engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have been working in the sub-civil engineering field for approximately a year.
When were you licensed in New Jersey?
Twenty-one.
Collins, you've had an opportunity to review what's been worked as B1, am I correct? Which is the report from CCH?
Correct.
Okay. And you've gone through the report in a sense of detail to understand what's in there. Correct? All right, I just want to go through the completeness items that have been brought to our attention. Going through 2.1, in terms of the plans or site plan being signed and sealed, is it signed and sealed?
Our office provided a digitally signed and sealed version of the plans that I believe will submit.
Number two, there's a question as to whether or not first a survey was used as a base for the plans, am I correct?
Correct, the survey was used as the base for the plans.
And can you identify that?
Could you speak up, please? We can hear you.
The survey was used as the base for the plans.
And can you identify that survey group that's reflected on your plan?
On sheet C301, note six, under general notes, lists the survey that was used as a base for the plans.
Is a title block on this?
Yes.
And what is it?
Title block is on every sheet.
Your name and your trust to be the owner of the building?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just, can we just go back? Michael, Doug, is there any concern about it not being five years? Or is that just something we just noted?
No, no, there's a significant concern about that. I mean, that's really the reason that this is an issue.
Okay, so then, so then we do need a survey within the last five years that we don't have?
It's particularly relevant because there's been site construction since that time too, which should be reflected in that survey so that the proposal can reflect existing conditions of the area.
Okay. All right, go ahead. You said, you mentioned you were on title block?
Have the title blocks been signed and sealed?
Yes, yes, they're part of the plan set, which was digitally signed and sealed.
Going to the lot boundary lines, right-of-way lines, screening easements, and other rights of way, are there any indications in the plan of easement or lot lines of accurate dimensions, bearing or deflection angles, radii or essential angles of curves?
Property lines are depicted on the plan as well as easements.
And where are the easements?
The easements are depicted on sheet C301.
Flood hazards.
And what about the rest? Your other items? Curves, et cetera, or we think there's the, oh, that's only the first portion of the statement in the report, I'm not the rest of it?
Bearings and distances of the lot lines are not on the plan.
Is that relevant to this application?
The, to my understanding, the proposed subdivision, which was approved by this board back in 2017?
Yes.
Is now reflected on the tax map, the current tax map for this particular block. So as it relates to the proposed amendments, all of that has been previously shown and approved.
Then why would we have it here if it has been shown and proved? Do you agree that they've been shown and proved?
I don't have any, I don't, what they're saying is they didn't include it because the subdivision's already been filed and perfected, correct? Is that what you're saying?
And is that okay?
That would have been reviewed before it was approved, recorded.
So then we're okay?
It may be okay. It's unclear as to if there's any other property delineations, easements, or other things that might, might occur as a result of the amendment.
Are the meets and bounds shown on C81?
Oh, they're shown.
Yes, they are.
So they are shown?
Not on all sheets, but.
On that particular sheet, yes.
Is there enough there for a read, Doug? Is the information there that you need to see?
I think it is. I mean, if it's based on the same survey that the original application was based on.
Okay.
I mean, I do see Mike's point as to there aren't as-built conditions out there that became verified, but if, if what they're showing as proposed is in the same location as what's currently out there, you know, that may be something that the board can use to, you know, determine whether or not a waiver should be granted. It is important, you know, an accurate current survey certainly would.
And there's no issue in that?
All right, so then if we get a current survey, then 3B will be taken care of. Is that true?
It should be, yeah.
Okay, so we still need a current survey. Okay. Okay, Jim?
I'm just thinking of the current survey. That is what is out there right now, is what that survey is going to indicate?
Yes, a current survey would indicate whatever is on the property right now.
Five A flood hazards, I think you want to throw that in there. Hand five down on the floor.
So the flood.
So it is, it is shown? Are we saying that everything is shown, that it's stated here, that the flood hazard areas affecting property are not shown? So it is, they are?
It is shown on sheet C401, the grading drainage and utility plan. It's labeled 100-year floodline zone AE elevation 10, just to the right of the building. And that was shown from the current preliminary FEMA map.
Is that, is that the same thing for the dome planner here as a floodway? Is the floodway and the flood hazard area boundary the same thing?
No, property is not in the floodway as shown on FEMA map, but it is in the flood hazard area zone AE, which is shown.
Where is the floodway in relation to the property?
It doesn't appear that there is a floodway that is near the property.
So if it's not near the property? It's not relevant.
Yes, so, correct.
So when you mention the FEMA map, doesn't reply here? Is that what we're saying? Because you just mentioned that.
They've shown the 100-year floodline in here, but the floodway, which is not shown on here, is not sufficient enough to show up on this plan.
Okay, all right, so we don't, we don't need that. Okay.
Vehicular circulation. Is there any vehicular circulation on your plan indicating the location mentions, access drives, driveways, aisles, and parking stalls?
From a site perspective, the entrances to the garage are dimensioned on sheet C301. And the circulation, to my knowledge, within the building is unchanged from the prior application, but the architect can give further testimony as to that.
What about the dimensions of the, of the spaces?
The dimensions of the spaces are shown on that. The, what's the exhibit number for the American? A2, on A2.
Okay, so it's not, we're back to the not signed and sealed situation, correct? That's what this is?
It's an exhibit.
Right, it's an exhibit, but it's not signed and sealed. Is that something that we need to have for the person that doesn't know, like me? Do we need a signed and sealed version of this that we're talking about? Ultimately, so we do, so it's incomplete?
You're going to need something that's verifiable.
Okay, so that's incomplete.
Whether you can get it now or can make it a condition, that's up to you, how you're going to proceed. Ultimately, you're going to want something that's verified, testimony and somebody that's licensed.
Okay.
Mysterious lighting in the 19. Is there any lighting that's depicted on your plan?
Lighting is depicted on sheet C701.
Indicates here is no point-by-point picture of horizontal illumination with a grid no small in 15 feet by 15 feet. As the regulations affecting lighting have changed since the application received approval, any change to the lighting scheme may require relief. It's a recommendation, the mounting height, or the mounting type including the lighting details for each light fixture, and the plan notes any changes in fixture types from the original approval. What are we showing on C701?
On C701, there is a point-by-point lighting analysis that appears to cover the sidewalk area. It does not appear that mounting heights are shown, but that information can be easily provided as requested.
Does C701 depict the original condition or your changed condition?
To my knowledge, C701 depicts the lighting as previously proposed.
But you've changed that, correct? I'll have Mr. Sacra provide testimony as to whether or not there's any changes.
The lighting plan is proposed currently. We are unable to review it for conformance. We know that there are some non-conformities here, but it doesn't show complete lighting information. The point-by-point is along the sidewalk. It doesn't include the areas inboard of the sidewalk and has significant off-site property impacts.
Okay, so that's incomplete.
It's different. If it's different, then what was originally approved?
Right, it, correct.
Right, okay.
And the rest is architecture?
No, I think about, yeah, it's architecture. I think it's a bit shady.
There are no further questions. We have the architect come up and address.
Yep, the next one is the architect. I believe that those are the remaining items.
You will be subject to recall on this application itself.
Before we leave, the engineer, I think you said on C801 is where the flood zone is listed, shown?
C401.
C401. Okay. To save me some time, point me to that particular.
The line is shown as a dashed line that runs east-west through the site. And if you look just to the left of the north arrow on the right-hand side of the page, there's a label for 100-year floodline zone AE elevation 10.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Was there, another engineering item might have been, it's 24D, an engineering item? The mechanical elements? No, that's on?
It's architecture.
Okay. All right, architect.
Good evening.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony without giving this matter the truth. Don't speak with nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Please state its right hand.
My name is David Businelli, D-A-V-I-D, Businelli, B-U-S-I-N-E-L-L-I.
Mr. Tarris?
Mr. Tarris, now, please give us a benefit of your qualification.
Yes, I am a registered and licensed architect in New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut. I've been in private practice for 26 years. My firm name is Studio 16 Architecture. I've been licensed in New Jersey since the year 2000.
You've testified before boards, planning boards, and zoning boards without escape, correct?
Yes, I have.
Now, the plans that we're dealing with here tonight were prepared by J.C.A. group, Jose Parabola, am I correct?
That's right.
And he's not available to be here tonight, am I correct?
That's right.
And you have worked with him, and you have consulted with him, am I correct?
Yes.
And in turn, you're familiar with this project, am I correct?
Yes.
And I'm sort of standing in for him tonight, am I correct?
Yes.
Speaks from a position of knowledge.
Okay.
What I want to do is, there are a number of items that were brought up that we're going to report in terms of incompleteness that pertain to the architectural elements of this application. I want to go for to 24, architecture, 24 page. The individual floor layouts have not changed, am I correct?
That's correct.
What has changed is the facade, am I correct?
Yes.
Are you worried whether or not there are any changes to the roof?
Yes, there have been some changes to the roof. The roof deck originally proposed has been eliminated, as well as the cantilever that was over the entrance way, that was part of the roof deck. That was in consideration of roof loads. There is, mechanical equipment is no longer the perimeter units. It's now a VRF system with an ERV. So that equipment is located on the roof also, and not visible from the street.
Located where?
On the roof.
Okay.
And these, these are small, so they're not, you know, it's not like a big package unit. So, and they're not visible from the street.
So are, are these changes somewhere? Do we have a plan for these?
We'll get you the roof plan.
You do not have, it hasn't been submitted?
It has not been submitted.
So none of these items are pictorially represented in any of the exhibits here this evening?
No, no.
Alright.
Directing that?
So 24-
I haven't seen this, though, we'll get you that.
Alright, so you don't, okay.
So are we saying that 24A and D are, do not exist? So those, those two are incomplete?
That's correct.
Okay. 24E?
Signs. Are signs reflected on the exterior of this building?
But, just, I'm sorry, but before we leave that, there's a roof where we acknowledge change, but there's also the, the floor area, the floor of the, on the garage, which is part of the building. And there's been testimony that, well, we're not changing any of the layout, but we're, we've got two, an exhibit, two exhibits that show the stacker. Those will be added to that plan, correct?
Will add those to the plan.
Those will be, and they'll be added, so that the dimensions all match?
Sure.
So currently, what we're looking at, does not have the items we just spoke about in addition to the floor plan, as it's now going to be based on the new parking system? That's not in there?
It's three-level stackers as opposed to two, but we can put that in there.
But it's not in there, correct? Nothing in, before the board was represented architecturally, pictorially?
Not architect, yeah, it is on the American.
Yeah, but not on his architectural.
That is striped on the American.
Okay, alright, okay.
And before we get to the signs, the, the configuration of the parking, you said the layout has not, is not changing?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And that is in horizontally or vertically? There's no changes within the surface of the?
No.
Nothing?
Well, there are pits.
Well, there are pits, it's a three-level stacker. So one parking space goes below, one is at the surface, and one is above.
So there was, go ahead.
There is a change to the floor of that floor.
Yeah, because we have the well for the-
Okay, okay.
Is that in that document?
Or just the system isn't?
There's no sections in that.
There are no sections in there. So we have nothing to look at that shows that new floor plan is different, depth.
That's right.
Okay. Well, I don't want to jump ahead, but we have also a situation with the transformer that was in the building before, and it's not. But that is a change, correct?
Well, that's a change, yeah. I mean, the footprint of the building hasn't changed, but that, that moves.
That's a slight, that's a slight development.
Okay, you don't want, okay.
I don't want to jump ahead either, but the original plan called for how many parking spots? And what does this new three-stacker call for?
The original parking plan, including the handicap, was 88. And with the stackers, I think on the stackers themselves, we get
125?
One, 109 on the stackers, and then you have to 120, wait. Something that says 150 down there.
That was, that was one of the alternatives.
Yeah, they're different, and that's all, have Mr. Sackman.
So from the original plan to the new plan, it's dramatically going up?
We're trying to increase as much as we can, the amount of parking on site. Obviously, knowing that there is a huge demand in the CBD for parking, we're trying to increase the parking that we can get in the CBD by including additional parking here on site.
Is it going to be a paid parking lot where people?
It's for tenants.
We shouldn't get into-
Okay, I didn't want to jump ahead, I'm sorry.
Then it'd be subject to cross-examination or like.
It's not a public parking lot, people just, now we're just working on-
Right, we're just looking on completion. Okay.
With the hearing on the changes.
Alright, so we need the, we need to understand what these, where these new stackers are, what goes on underneath the ground that we didn't know was happening before. So we need to know that, and we need to know the roof items that we, we spoke about in the new HVACA. Okay, there are other items, obviously, that we have, but they are not on this, on this list, but I, for regarding completeness or incompleteness. So why don't we, are we okay to move on to?
I believe we're at the sign.
The signs, yes.
Yeah, right now, there's, there was a plan, an elevation, that showed a backlit metal sign, and then the number over the door. It's just a number over the door, and that's for simplicity. So that's, that's what's there now.
But-
Is any plan for any sign to be there, meaning the sign is on the elevation?
So this, so this exists, or this is new?
No, there's one, the only lettering currently on the building is right above the door.
Is it new, or was it existing, or is it new?
It's existing.
So the plans that we approved had this sign there?
The plans that you approved have a brushed steel, stainless steel backlit sign.
Is that the same sign that's there now?
No.
Alright, so it's a different sign?
Just a, just a building level.
Okay, so that's incomplete?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you say it, it's not on what was submitted, so it's not on what was submitted.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Not incomplete, it's not there because that's not what is being proposed.
Well, actually, it is. It says right here, it says, the showing of the signs, and the sign is different from what was approved. It's different. Okay. Next. Project description, I think that we determined that we're okay with that, and that was not an architect. Go ahead.
The, the sign is indicated on the elevation.
Right.
It doesn't have dimensions, we don't know. I mean, it's, it's the compliance stuff that's required by the checklist, it's not there.
Let me see.
But what you're saying is, you're actually, even though this was submitted, like, you're eliminating that sign.
Far as I know, yeah.
That's what they're saying.
So you're eliminating the sign now, there's a new sign? I'm just trying to understand.
The address.
It's your numbers.
It's just the house number on, on the door, the address.
It's an address sign. So it just needs to be made sure that it conforms to whatever-
Okay, so we need to know what the dimensions are, the heights, the whatever?
And that we'll give.
That you'll give me?
So it's the dimension, the things that determine conformance.
Right, right, so that's, go ahead.
I'm thoroughly confused. I thought you just told us that what is there now was not what was on the original plan that was approved. Is it arisen?
That's correct. The only signage is the building address over the entrance.
Which is different.
Which is different than what was approved.
Right.
And it's different than what was submitted as part of this amended application.
Right.
Okay.
And we'll get to the information on what's there now, so.
Okay.
When we have a special meeting, we won't be staying in this meeting. It's great, we call it a special meeting, and we don't have the stuff to look at. Any other issues, architectural issues that this gentleman is doing?
I think that's, I think we've covered all the things.
We covered the checklist there.
Right.
But before we leave, let-
Okay. You mentioned the floor layout has not changed. Does that also mean the number of public units hasn't changed? That's correct.
Is this the writer you're referring to, Mr. Karas?
I can't see that.
Now, you know how we feel when that's over there.
This is a two-paragraph writer that was submitted with this package. And this describes everything that you are-
I have notes I had, then submitted amended writer, and also the description, I think in August 11th, in terms of how the parking zone to operate. There are a number of things that I submitted at the request.
Okay.
Alright, so, shall we?
Is that it for this witness?
That's all for this witness, yes.
Thank you. There are, I believe that's all the issues raised in the report?
In the completeness section.
The completeness, yeah, no, this is all, this is that.
Okay. Alright, so, it seems, unless you want to take over, Jack, that we have to determine as a board whether this application is complete or incomplete. And if it is complete to our satisfaction, then we can continue on. If it's incomplete, then we have to go back, and then the applicant comes back, once it's completed, once it's deemed complete by our planner. So, I think that we have to kind of have that discussion, and to see what, and see what our members think on whether or not we should proceed, or, I mean, we have to vote. Whether we deem that this is incomplete or complete. Meaning that we can, why don't you say what would have to happen, go ahead.
What would have to happen is, if you say, for example, I'll pick up on one that seems to be very glaring, that just came to, you know, last, is the architect. You need to see the plan showing the roof deck, the floor plans, mechanical system location, signage, and that's to a lesser degree, and there was something else that was omitted from the front of the building.
Well, it was the mechanicals that, that-
Honing of some sort, or-
Marquage, it could be a marquage.
Yeah, something like that. If you determine that you don't need them now in order to deem the application complete, and that you have enough information, go forward and hear the substantive portion for the application for the amendments, then you move forward. If you feel like you don't, then you, and you want that before you proceed, then you decide that's the case, the applicant has to submit it before you proceed.
Okay.
That's just an example.
Right, no, I understand.
You should or you shouldn't, that's entirely to you.
Can I make a suggestion?
And also, let me, before you do, Andy, for the purposes of this vote, which is just deeming, deeming the application complete, I don't have a problem legally with all of the members that are in attendance voting on that, because they're all entitled to be in the discussion. That's not, has nothing to do with whether or not they participate in the vote granting the amendments that you request.
I don't know if we can split the vote that way.
Well, this is only for the purpose, alright, I mean-
Procedurally, I, I just don't-
Alright, well, then be safe, to be safe, then.
They can participate in the discussion, and then the only relevant, the only members who can vote on it
would be from the mayor down to councilwoman.
Eric wasn't, weren't here?
Eric and these gentlemen were not here, but you can participate in the discussion certainly. So the vote will be limited to the-
But how, but then how many people do we have to vote?
Four.
So four.
Oh, wait. This is an audit of the board. I need five for quorum to vote.
Well, he wasn't there.
No.
Daniel and James.
I'll do it any way you like, I just don't want-
We're gonna have to let her.
Yeah, I don't want to be involved in an appeal or any nonsense like that.
Okay, so now you'll have my consent then for a full vote?
Yeah, okay, so then let's go back to my original suggestion, based on necessity, a little necessity, so to speak. We need to have everybody participate and vote on the yes.
If I can be heard before we get to-
Yes, of course.
Number one, we're all here tonight, we do have a number of issues that we are addressing. Even assuming that you deem some of these items incomplete, we can come back and provide. But we have a facade here, we can at least get to the facade and utilize our time tonight to get to it. That's the number one. Number two, I had submitted this application seven months ago. I got a report two days ago, or three days ago, deeming this, number of these items incomplete. If I had information as to the additional items the board wanted, I would deem it complete. Would have gotten to a long time, as opposed to now, we're here tonight getting this a couple days ago, after the application was submitted back in March. It would have made it a lot more efficient in getting this application heard. In turn, we are, any of these items that you're requesting can be provided. We might as well get to the test one with regard to the facade, and utilize the time that we have tonight to address the issues, at least part of the application, for what we're here for in terms of an amendment to the approved application. I'll tell you right now, this application has, or this project has had a very tortured history. Number one, as I indicated, took two years to deal with issues which I had argued for two years should have been resolved within a matter of very quick time. Not only that, I had a then bring suit against the city because we had an issue with the redevelopment agreement that then extended the time in which this application could proceed. Right, where the court ultimately decided to agree with me in terms of the redevelopment agreement, which should be contained with the redevelopment agreement. Once the court came down to this decision in, I'd say, early 2019, both sides of the city, as well as my client, we both worked very efficiently in trying to negotiate the redevelopment agreement to take it up. It finally got done in November of 2019. There's a lot of stuff to go over and work through. Both were very hard, the city and also my client, to get that done. Redevelopment agreement was done on November 20th of 2019. Three months later, COVID. So now we're two and a half years after the approval, and then nearly three years when COVID had arrived. Two years, maybe, whatever it is. And then we had to deal with the issues in terms of trying to get a building built, materials supplied to the site, and labor, notwithstanding the fact that you had to deal with the shutdown of getting anybody on-site performing work. So we've been dealing with this for, I think it's five years, trying to get this building done. Let's utilize the time, the buildings, we gotta get this thing done, we gotta get people moved in. There are 60 units I can provide housing for people that isn't desperate. Let's utilize the time tonight, get through these, the outside facade, architecturals. Review that, let's discuss that, these other revisions, we can come back. That is my suggestion and recommendation.
If I may respond. You know, if it was something, you know, in the state of the torturous history of this project, but talking about the expert reports coming back saying what you're, you know, it's not your first time here, nor is it Mr. Sackman's first time here. And, you know, don't put the, because you don't have certain things that you should know, that should have been submitted, like, for instance, I mean, you're putting a change in parking, and it should be in the site plan. And then you know that, you know about the five-year rule for the survey. So, I mean, you know, those things, you know, we have a special meeting here, and we don't have things that need to be looked at, but we don't have pictorial representations. I don't know how we come to a, you know, a conclusion on that, but, you know, I'm all for, you know, we can hear testimony on facade.
I'm actually in, in agreement with, with Daniel regarding the parts here that are incomplete. I can't imagine voting this, for me.
You wouldn't be able to vote tonight?
No, no, I'm saying for completeness or incompleteness, only.
I'm sorry.
Only, incompleteness or completeness. I can't imagine voting this as being complete, personally, that's just me. Because you know the five-year rule, you know the HVAC changed, you know, you, there are so many things you know that we need, and it's not here. So I, unless someone else has something to say, I'm happy to start a, a vote. Anyone else want to say something? No? No? Okay.
You can't, applications that are incomplete shouldn't be heard. That's the rule, but I get what Andy's saying, and I understand it, but you can't draw any conclusions or proofs, you can't, you can't vote on these architectural plans tonight.
They don't exist.
Information will be submitted, but you can deem it complete.
You know, I do want to add something also. You know, I get letters of incompleteness constantly from the zoning office. And the letters I get contain stuff like, put bubbles around the architectural planes. Bubbles, that's not a site list or a checklist item. The reason that you have in there that review from the zoning office for completeness is to deal with a lot of this stuff.
But that you weren't asked to put bubbles on here.
Yes, I was.
So, I mean, we're talking about this, you, you, listen, again, I'll bring up, you know, I could have been doing other things tonight, we're all volunteers here. This is a special meeting, we had a meeting last week, we'll have a meeting next weekend, I signed up for this. But, again, that you, that you've come here knowing that things would be missing, and that, you know, we would be asking you, fundamental things, like having an up-to-date survey. that, you know, we would be asking you fundamental things, like having an up-to-date survey, or to, you expect us to hear testimony on changes to that we don't have plans, it's a little ridiculous.
All right. I'd like to make, make a motion to deem this application incomplete and have the applicant come back once it's complete.
You want to make the specifics, for example, the architectural plans?
I, I, I only know, I, I know them from these numbers, so I don't know if that's something Michael should do, or if that's something that, I can just tell you which ones that I see from here. So it's, so I'm seeing that it's 1B. I'm seeing that it's 3B. I'm seeing, I think it's, I'm not sure, it says, I think it's 14 vehicular circulation.
3B, there was testimony that the bearings were on the phone.
So you're okay with those? Boundary lines, easements?
Yes.
Those are okay?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, we don't need that?
If no easements come up, they can be added later, they're not required.
Okay, okay. Looks like it's 14 vehicular circulation, meaning that the dimensions of the, the spaces and any changes to the floor of the garage, apparently that's changed, as well as the roof, I don't see, oh no, the roof's not yet, I'm sorry. Exterior lighting, all the lighting, lighting plan for all the lighting, so that's 19. 24, it looks like 24, we need the plans for the roof, and that's the one where we need it for the, for the garage. The parking levels that have, that have changed. And, and then we have the mechanicals, that's changed, so that needs to be, that's 24D. And 24E. Those are the ones that I have. I don't know if anybody has anything else?
You said 24B?
I said 24.
E.
I said E for the signage and 24D for the mechanicals.
What about the facade? Would that be made? 24A also.
24A.
They provided an elevation. They provided architectural elevation, it's the plans that were efficient under 24A.
How about the parking system being signed off on by an engineer and/or architect?
Yes, that's the one.
Just a brochure of whatever the company's providing or manufacturer?
That's 14. That is 14, was it? Yes. Wait a second, let me just find it.
I, I haven't.
14, is that sort of the requirement that was on the site, planned itself, besides our standalone plan?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, 14, yes.
That marquee or furniture, so that should be shown on the architectural plans as well.
Okay, that's, that is my motion.
Second.
The only thing that scares me about that motion is if through rushing it, we forgot something. And any, and any other thing that is not complete.
Regarding through what we, what we see on this.
Right.
These forms, we see these are incomplete.
Okay.
Now, once.
Did you make a list?
Yeah, what I'll do also.
No, no, it wouldn't be limited to those.
As we submit things, I'm going to submit them to you and to the board. Totally fine, okay.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, that we'll make sure that between the two of you, if you miss something, we'll let you know, whatever.
And well, as we resubmit, I'll go through with Michael.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, and so once again, we're back to the fact that if something is not deemed complete, then we shouldn't be hearing the application.
A motion by Warren?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Shiana Mayo. And we need a roll call vote?
Mayor John Moore.
Unless there's any further discussion.
Unless you, somebody wants to discuss.
Okay.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Eric Gallobo?
I don't get to vote.
Yes, you do.
Oh, you do. I'm sorry, you do. Yes. Daniel?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
So we know where we stand here. The next thing we need to do is adjourn the matter to another date, certain time. There's no need to renotice, the notices are adequate. There's no need to put this aside and throw any extra expense.
No.
So let's figure out a time.
And if that, if, right, and if it would be enough time for the applicant to get all this together?
Sure that anything that's in that is on.
Okay, so what's the next date that we have? I think it's the 21st of November?
Can we get anything before that?
So.
Well, can we do another special meeting?
We do have you still scheduled for the 3rd. We never took, October 3rd, we never took you off just in case. Right, but at the same time, that's not enough time for professionals to review everything and provide reports.
And everything has to be in 10 days.
Right. Then we're looking at the 21st of November?
Is there anything before that, or a special?
Well, as far as special, you can request special anytime you like, and then we can vote and see if everybody can make it. You can always request a special.
But we've got to carry it to a date certain time. Or we have to wind up.
You can do the 21st.
November 21st.
If we don't carry it, you know, we have to make a renotice, and I don't want to make you do that.
Well, if we do a special, then we'll have. Yeah, yeah.
Please carry it to something as backup position, and then he and Carter can discuss what they're going to do.
All right, so let's carry it to the, to November 21st, no further notice.
I know now that it's deemed incomplete, we don't, I don't need your consent, I'm going to ask them anyway, attend the time, act within the M O U timeframe.
Okay.
So we need a motion and a second to carry it to vote and a vote?
Yes, can we, a motion to carry it to the 21st of November, no further, no further notice?
So.
Second.
Roll call?
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Eric Gallobo?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
I'll vote yes also.
Mr. Harvey?
Just cause.
Oh, I skipped you, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So before we adjourn, I. We, we weren't allowed to vote because we weren't original members. This is just a point of discussion for us, like, we weren't.
That would be, that would be, Jack would have to be involved in that.
So, so Jack, I'm just trying to understand, so James and Dan and I were not original members on this application, so are we eligible?
Yeah, yeah, and the law says that, and Andy, you may want to listen up to this, but law, the law, I just finished another seminar on refreshment, the law says you have to be able to continue to function. You get applications from years ago where the entire board could be different. I believe that the new members are entitled to vote.
On the, on whatever happens moving forward.
Because that's, that ensures continuity and people being able to get approvals or denials when we have them, so you, the three of you can participate in the future.
Right, and the reason we couldn't vote on this tonight was because we didn't?
Well, I, I stand corrected, I would have been wrong, because I think you can't participate and vote on the substantive portion on the amendments.
Okay, okay.
Because the law provides that new members can do that, and I don't think you really have to go back and listen.
It's technically a new application.
Yeah, it's technically. Like, somebody who's probably against the original application, that's a different story. The three of you aren't here, so, yeah, for everybody here.
So that was my issue, it's like, do I have to go back and?
No.
Barbara? These guys had asked if we could talk at the beginning of the meeting.
Uh, this was not a public, this was not, this was a discussion of, of completeness, not of the application.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but we have 100 people, one of the Asbury Park residents, who signed leases in good faith, and have paid two months' rent to the applicant, packed their bags, have no place to live, and now this has been carried to November 21st with no one in sight. It is completely unfair, it's a travesty, the confusion between the applicant and the city, I'm not laying blame. People should have never been asked to sign leases, how are they going to be compensated? When are they going to move in? My daughter is one of those residents. I'm a homeowner in Asbury Park, and she wants to be a resident at Asbury Park, and she and 100 other residents have put their, have their lives on hold. They're young people whose lives have been put on hold, because of the confusion between the parties, and it's just not fair, it's a travesty, I've never seen anything like it. How could you have possibly allowed these people to sign leases, take their money, when your application was not complete, and you had discommunication with the city? Should have never happened. When are these people going to be able to move in, and how are you going to compensate them? You must answer these questions. It's just not fair. I've got to go back and tell my daughter if she can't move in until I have Christmas? This makes absolutely no sense. This is not how business should be done, anyway. I would appreciate hearing, answer to these questions. We cannot just dismiss and adjourn this meeting.
We're not going to answer those questions here.
We're not going to answer that.
I know you don't have a constitution, I'm making a public statement, I'd like the applicant to hear it, I would like the mayor and the councilmembers to hear it.
Okay, and can you adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second, full in favor. I.
I just have.
Thank you.